Good morning, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in the hands of our capable city clerk, Ms. Lisa Carroll.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council Wednesday, September 24th. Of approval of minutes from September 2nd.
Any issues in the one? Okay.
Appeals, we have requests for away with the noise ordinance on October the 4th, 6:30 PM until 10:30 PM at the Brad Mitchell Mashin on Dolphin Street. I don't have a date here. Kimberly Knight. And it's from 12:00 PM until 5:00 PM. November the 21st, from 6:30 to 10:30 on St. Louis Street. November 24th, from 5:30 to 10:00 PM on Airport Boulevard.
Just get that date for Councilman Carroll. Councilman Carroll, are you good with the rest of them? No, get the date.
This one is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll just talk about it between meetings. Yeah. We'll talk about during between meetings. She'll get it to you.
Okay. So, public hearing today is a public hearing of fixed costs for demolition of structures at 303 South Dearborn Street, 2150 Old Donald Street, and 3211 Valley Road. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Janice Lilly, to express her gratitude to the City of Mobile on the occasion of her retirement. Antonio Maven, concerns about transit workers pension plan and possible termination.
Madam.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
On this one, Scott, can you give us an update on that? On the pension and what? I'm sorry, what?
Yes, so.
Can you?
Sir, I apologize, we were literally five minutes late on that. Just with the last minutes, I have a quick handout I can get you.
Yeah, we can.
I have a quick handout I think we'll.
It's still.
Ash, this is your was a mic. Thank you. I have a quick handout I can give you, I think we'll, if we can go over for just a second, I think we'll answer most of the questions on the pension itself.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, it will take just, just a moment. So.
Can we get one more?
I'm sorry?
Let's get one more for the clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, specific to the pension for the transit system, we've had to go back and do a little work. We knew there'd be a couple of hiccups as we got through some of the things. And what we determined is, on the pension for the transit system, the history of that goes back to, the history of that, thank you, goes back to 2002, when the city transitioned from the city-operated transit system to the format that we have today. At the 2002 transition, the employees transitioned from a RSA-defined benefit plan, the state retirement system, over to a self-funded pension plan that was similar. It's a defined benefit plan. But it was owned and managed by the employees. There's a pension board. It does its own investments. It manages its own money. The city funded the pension through its contributions to, for its operating cost to the transit system. And then first it was, first transit, I believe Transdev now is the partner today. But the way that worked is the employees make a 5% contribution, just as RSA employees make a 5% contribution. And then the city, or Transdev through the city, matched that percentage. And we typically get a letter each year saying what that percentage would be. An example for RSA, for 2026, we matched 13% of employees' retirement for RSA. A similar thing happens to this transit, to this transit pension plan. As we get from Transdev through VIA in that transition, the question came about what happens to the employees' pension fund. VIA does not own or operate any defined benefit pensions throughout all of their system. All of theirs are 401K or defined contribution. Employee puts an amount in, they match up to a certain percentage, and then it's self-managed effectively by the employee. In an effort to make sure that we are able to transition successfully and keep the pension plan as it is today, we've had a few conversations and we think we've hit a middle ground that would make that work. And I will kind of run over this document with you. And I think this will answer most of where we are. But under, going just down the list, under A, the transit workers' pension plan continues to function in its current form unchanged in any way as a fully independent pension plan. The city, while it provides money to the pension, does not manage the pension. There is a pension trust that manages it. There's a board of directors. We simply provide the funds, they manage their own. We would continue to do that. The transit system employees in retirees will continue to participate in the transit system pension plan as is. Under this proposal, there will be no changes to their pension. Transit employees will continue to have deducted from their paycheck the standard customary employee pension contribution amount. And that is what they pay now, the 5%. They would just have 5% cut out of their check. Port City Transit, or VIA, would then make their contribution match. In order to make that work, the proposal is this. Our, our contract with VIA is that they charge us $666,000 a month, 666, 667 rounded up. The proposal would be that rather than submit that invoice, they would deduct from that $666,000 the amount of the employee contribution and the amount of the VIA contribution. We would then pay the invoice for their operating cost for the month less that amount of money. And the city would then contribute those funds directly to the transit employees' pension fund. If we go through that model, the pension is unaffected. VIA is unaffected. The pension employees are unaffected. There may be some slight net cost to the city over and above the contract that we have with VIA. That's just going to be a cost of doing business to maintain the pension plan. But we believe that even those costs are going to be less than what we're paying now for the operations of the transit system as it exists today. This is kind of a brief outline. We have a more formal document that's coming to you. We've been negotiating this really for the last 72 hours. We learned yesterday through VIA's attorney that they are agreeable to this plan. So with that, that partnership would be intact. There'll be no violation of the contract. Pension stays whole. Employees are unaffected by the transition as it relates to their pension. So, we think that answers every question. And we're able to provide that to the city council in an amendment to the VIA contract next week.
So, what's the city's contribution? That the employees' contribution is?
We think, we think it's going to be about 7%. We're using this marker. Currently, the city matches for state retirement about 13%. We think this is going to be similar. The employees will put in their 5% typically, and VIA is working on this this morning. Typically, on a 401K, they're going to match 5% or 6% up to a certain amount. So if we're to take 5%, right? And deduct that from the 13% that we pay for RSA, if that's our marker, we'd be paying about 8% of those employee costs. So, we don't have the exact number. But the pension plan last year was funded at $897,000. 297 of that came from the employees. 600 came from, from the city. Obviously, the 600 is going to be reduced because VIA is going to have a percentage of money put in. So our total net retirement pension plan contributions from the city will be less. It will just simply be a little more than what the contract we have currently in place is. So we still think we're in, in the sweet spot for the pension and the service contract.
Okay.
And I apologize, that made me more than you wanted to know. I know it's early and late for some.
Well, you know, the reason I asked is after you and I had had a conversation last week because the employees had received a letter from VIA. And according to the woman I spoke with, the letter basically said, "You've got to sign this letter if you want to have a job." And oh, by the way, your pension is going to be changed. And so they were upset. And she had reached out to me about it. And Scott and I talked, and I called her back and told her what she said. So, I mean, I think that is good news for them. They, they just need to know that their pension is there. It's not going to be affected. They will continue to get the same pension as they had been expecting all along, even with the change in ownership.
Certainly.
Companies running them.
This will result in an invisible change as it relates to the pension for, for the employee, I think was, was the effort here. We knew, I sent an email out a couple of weeks ago, hey, there are going to be some hiccups as we go through. This is one of those hiccups. But the fix is relatively simple. VIA has been a really good partner to help us with that. I think this solves the urgency or concern from the employees. VIA would simply recraft that letter and it would go from a 401K. And there's, we'd relatively silent on, on the pension itself.
For any new employees coming in, will they still be on this same pension plan that current employees are? Or will they be switched into a 401K?
The way this is worded, they would be on the pension plan. We kicked around back and forth transitioning them to a 401K. The challenge for that is, and we've looked at this from the perspective of forever is a long time. And we want to make sure that we don't make decisions today that someone after us has to kind of go back and unwind. The thinking for all this is we really had three employees to consider. Employees, one, are the employees' future, who don't work there yet but have come in. What happens to them? Second were employees who are currently employed. And the third was the retirees. Even if we had gone from a defined benefit to a 401K, there's still an obligation for the retirees on the plan. So looking backwards at that, it just made sense to make sure that the system whole stays in place without trying to go back and make those incremental changes because we're still going to have the answers to the, to the questions.
Well, and it seems like it would be easier to have everybody on the same plan rather than trying to have two different ones going on. It gets confusing.
That's correct. What we, what we will do, we have copies of the pension audit, the June 30, 2024 pension audit. And it states clearly that it's managed, self-funded. So there will be an effort, as we close fiscal year 2025 on the city side, to relieve ourselves from that pension liability on our books because we won't own the pension liability. The pension trust will have that liability by virtue of its own audit. So we do think there is an opportunity to have a liability come off of our books, right? That will help us from our financial position as it relates to future, future benefits. So we think that there will be an offset on paper that will absorb the $300, $300,000 or so difference if we maintain this plan.
Thanks.
Certainly.
Mr. President Wood. That was just, my question was, is there obviously pensions that in 2025, a lot of times are antiquated? And just the way it is, I, I, you answered my question about the 401K, about the availability for, you know, the future employee to have that access. But I do have a question. You know, obviously, with the 2026 budget, we're bringing the fire and employees' pension plan up speed. And the viability of the transit pension, I mean, it, I mean, it's at the, you know, to the best of our knowledge, given all market, market circumstances. I mean, it's, it's taken care of itself. They're not, you know, there's no anticipated look that we're going to have to come in and try to catch that, that plane up eventually, I guess.
That is correct. They had, if I remember the audited numbers correctly, they had roughly 1.6 million in distributions last year and $21 million in assets. So they are, they're far and above where they need to be. So there will be no unfunded pension liability. It would just be the city's match of that, that gap percentage in between.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And what else? Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Yes, sir.
Continuing presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Beverly Cooper regarding addressing the upcoming change in city governance and how the city runs elections. Sabrina Mazz, Alabama Supreme Court report that shows the unredacted Kenyon Brown report. Reggie Hill, citizen involvement at regular council meetings. Amendments to council rules, investigation into taxpayers', resources, equal execution of laws, public safety, and performance contracts. Ordinance is held over 52046, adopts Chapter 52, real property maintenance, and enforcement Article 8, vacant structure registry for Henry Aaron Luke.
Mr. President.
Been talking with, with Paul and also Councilman Penn about some, some issues that had come up. And Paul had recommended that we lay this over at least another week to get some answers on this. Corey shared a, a letter that he received from a property owner downtown. She had a lot of questions and concerns that I thought we should at least try to provide a response to and get some answers. And then I think Paul, there were a couple of other things that we were working on as well that we needed to get resolved before we voted.
That is correct.
Anything else we need to add to that?
No, but we've circulated some. I've circulated some proposed revisions and, and we'll have to talk about that. I just wanted to make sure that all the council members had had a chance to review that. Councilman Reynolds is out of the country, so this will give him a chance also to come back.
Yeah, because he had a lot of.
He had a lot of questions.
Well, a lot of his questions were mostly wordsmithing.
Yeah, wordsmithing, but yeah.
As, I mean, I've talked to you, Paul, too. And just a reminder to the council that the state of Alabama is a land right state. The 1901 Constitution of the State of Alabama was written on the premise of land and property owners, which makes it very hard for us to do some things that are specific to one group of people and not all groups of people. Again, that's been one of my biggest concerns. So that wording is going to be critical to make sure that we can move forward and do whatever we would like to do. The cost section right there, I don't know what you guys as a whole are going to want to do as far as costs and fines and how that's going to be implemented. I had a conversation with you this morning about first right of lien. When the city imposes a lien on a property and it's with the owner of the property, but the owner of the property is also the developer of the property and it develops the property with lien on it, then what happens to the lien? You know, first right of lien, if there's development money involved, no bank involved, then where's this, how's the city recovering its fine? Or does it need to recover its fine once it's developed? Those types of things need to kind of be answered or also talked about before the next week's up. That's all I really had this morning. I'll take a look at it again once it comes back. But I'll send out whatever I need to, to whatever council members I need to so that everybody can take a, get thought about it. But I think we're on a, on a good, straight, and forward path. I just think that we need to be, again, cognate of the fact that we're talking about one specific area and not the whole city. And be aware of the fact that I, you know, I'm kind of disagreeable to, you know, just penalizing one group of people but not having a way to get the things we need to do, get done in other parts of the city that have some of the same issues. That's it, Mr. President.
Councilman Davis.
It seems like there are still a great many issues having to do with this piece of legislation. Perhaps it'd be wise to have another committee meeting.
We can do that.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with that. But I'd like to see us, it's, we're getting short on time. I mean, I'd like to see this go away before, you know, the end of October. I mean, some of us are on the clock here. And if we're going to do something, you know, we need to be able to do it in a, in a, in a right amount of time so that it's correct. And as I said before, the, the biggest thing is making sure that whatever we do is going to not pose a burden to this council or to the next administration and also not to the people downtown in a, in an unintended way as we move forward. Set a date and just let me know, I've got the time off either. I think I'm the chairman.
And, and, well, it's your committee as well, so.
Do we have to invite Councilmember Reynolds, eh?
Can we do it while he's still on the table, right?
First week in October.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. That if y'all want to just to hold this over two, three, one, two, three weeks, if y'all want to try to have a committee meeting on next week, on next Tuesday. And they will be hold over to the 14th.
All right. All right, Madam Clerk.
CIP resolutions held over 211192, authorized contract with Iker Construction Corporation for splash pad at Crawford Murphy Park. Consent resolutions held over 40974, declare structure at 2666 Josephine Street and 616 Pettit Avenue, public nuisance in order to demolish.
Mr. David.
Hey, good morning. I just have an update. It's mainly for Mr. Pence, since hopefully he's in his district. They're held over so that the property owner could take some action. We're hoping that they get a permit or begin demolition or begin repair. Regrettably, for the first one, the 2666 Josephine Street, we've seen no action. The condition of the building is the same, still a public nuisance, in my opinion. And I do recommend that we move forward to declare it a public nuisance with the demolition. Good news is, 616 Pettit Avenue, we do have the property owner. They decided they want to demolish the property and they do have an active permit right now. I do recommend that we table that particular application this morning.
Okay. All right, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Resolution.
Resolutions held over 081200, approved purchase order to Time Clock Plus for timekeeping account software biometric readers for MIT. 131202, authorized change order number one with Wirecrest Construction for Western Bayfront resurfacing. 211203, authorized contract with James H. Adams and Sons Construction Company for the repair and stabilization of Azalea City Golf Course in 12 Mile Creek. 371204, amend Katan Amet's Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity. Consent resolutions being introduced. 401208, 1209, 1210 are fixing the cost of demolition of structures. 461211, honorarily renamed Diamond to honorary mother Bessie Mae Grayson Way. 581229, declare Wees Noxious Group 1670. 371230, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail liquor license to L. Jaffe, Jaffe House of Cigar.
Yes, sir.
Afe, okay. House of Cigars. On Virginia Street. This. No problems, okay. Resolutions being introduced. 211212, authorized contract with Kimberly Horn and Associates for design of signalized intersection improvements citywide. 211213, authorized contract with Kimberly Horn for design, signalization, intersection improvements on Oshil Road. $62,703.42. 081214, approve award item base bid for medical oxygen for mobile fire and rescue. 081215, approved purchase order to Cummins Mid-South for fuel pump and engine gaskets for fire pumper truck. $25,795.05. 081216, approve purchase order to Environmental Systems Research Institute for annual renewal of software and support services for geographic information systems. 081217, 1218, 1219 are approving purchase orders to Hardy Chevrolet Buick for 40 Chevrolet Tahos, 56 Chevrolet Tahos. In amounts of $2,47,470, $2,286,866,458.50. And for, for Chevrolet Tahos, totaling $204,747.04.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Woods.
Just for the sake of transparency and knowledge, because I, I do, do know that I did some, I did see some comments or in the, in the media. As far as this large purchase, purchase of vehicles, can you just, just kind of briefly give some color of, you know, why we're purchasing 96, 100, 100 vehicles?
So there's a state bidding process. And, and what happens is they open up a portal and we put our orders in for the year. If we don't do it this year, it's going to be the following year before we can actually order them. So we actually front-load and put them all in. And what, what happens to this, at the plant, they'll stop production on normal passenger Tahos and only fill those, those amount of orders for not just the City of Mobile but for across the state, across the country. And that's why we have to do it. It's such a bulk purchase.
Yeah, so thank you.
Mr. Davis and Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Lasky, are all these vehicles for the police department?
Yes.
And how many? How many patrol vehicles do you, do you have?
Off the top of my head, I can get you that number by, by 10, before 10:30. Don't know off the top of my head. I know there, we have about a 15, 10 to 15% overage because police officer, police vehicles are probably the most driven and the most involved in an accident in the city. So we try to keep us spared, but it's tough keeping them going because of that and the fact that parts sometimes are still an issue. And we have some vehicles that shouldn't probably, should have been retired but aren't.
Well, my, the reason I ask is because my recollection is that there were about 500 patrol vehicles in the police department. And they had about a five-year expected life. And so we were going to replace about 100 of them a year. So this number does not surprise me. But, you know, that's my recollection. I don't, I don't know if that's correct today. But, so I, I just want to come back to what Councilman Woods' question was kind of really headed at. And that is, we, we have to replace about 100 patrol vehicles every year.
Absolutely. And then you figure we're also.
We might as well do it at a time when we can do it least expensively.
And in this year, we're also adding an additional 24 officers. So that's 24 additional vehicles that need to be added.
Thank you.
Councilman Carroll.
Is, how does the bid process work? Is this a low bid situation or based on specification? Or is this, you know?
So, so for the state bid each year, the state of Alabama, through its purchases department, opens up a series of bids. And they can be for patrol vehicles, passenger vehicles, tractor equipment, office supplies, what have you. On vehicles, they're typically good for 24 or 36 months. So they would guarantee those prices for that long. Those manufacturers, in this case Chevrolet, you would, they would open up that bid window for a certain period of time. And you can purchase vehicles through the authorized dealer, the, the, the dealer across the state that won that bid and purchase through them.
Does it work the same way for trucks and dump trucks and all that stuff?
So on, on truck, passenger trucks, pickup things, any of the passenger vehicle, yes. Typically, on dump trucks of that nature, they'll do two ways. One, you'll do just the truck and the chassis. And the box will be separate because of the need of the box. Or they'll let you upfit on state bid. And you can purchase a specific predetermined box that will be on state bid separate from the actual vehicle itself.
Yeah, I was just looking at the next two items on the agenda. Were there actual trucks that were, were bought? Were those part of the same bid process or that process different?
So those trucks would go through the state bid process as well.
Can you pick from a vendor that was part of the, the process? Is that vendor local or is it anywhere in the state?
So on, so on state bid, it can be across the state. And typically, you'll have a different vendor. One will be a Chevrolet, one will be a Ford, one will be a Dodge or whatever that, whatever that vendor is. So typically, we have one vendor. The only offset is, there's occasionally where you'll have instances where police pursuit vehicles will be one by one vendor and passenger vehicles will be one by another vendor. But it's, it's done by vendor, by state bid for that particular purchasing cycle.
Yet the next two items don't, don't appear to be police items, I don't think. They just seem like everyday work vehicles, right?
They, they are. But then when you go through truck equipment sales, they would be an authorized bidder for that, for that vehicle or type. Just about everything we're going to buy, this can be a vehicle, is going to be off of state bid. There's no incentive, financial or otherwise, to do that. There are some provisions in the law where you can buy locally. But on their rate that we purchase, it doesn't make fiscal sense to make this purchase.
So it's not like I open up three tabs and I see the lowest bidder and I take from those.
No, sir. It works where you click on the state bid, you search for the vehicle that you're looking for, and it gives you the prescribed winning bidder or, or bidders. But all the prices will be the same and you pick regionally where that will be.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk.
081223, approved purchase order to send some equipment for a dump trailer for Public Services Department, $63,500. 091224, transfer funds from general fund to capital improvements fund. 211225, authorized contract of Osprey Initiative for citywide school litter education program, $50,000. 211226, authorized contract with Anderson Delaney for Market. Oh, Racket, yeah. Racket Stringer Services for Parks and Recreation Department. 211227, authorized contract with McCarran Services for parking shuttle services for the cruise terminal, $100,000 per year. 091231, authorized memorandum of understanding with Port City Transit for services to operate the city's transit system. Call for public hearings. 411228, call for public hearing to revoke the business license at. at 1608 St. Stevens Road, scheduled October the 14th. Announcements.
There's not much, under $50,000 on the resolutions, if y'all want to look. Now, 211225 is right at 50.
Yeah, no, Mr. Slater asked if we could take that today. I think there's a time constraint.
This one, the Osprey? Okay, that's fine. And then, do you want to include 011231? Or go ahead and just lay that one over for another week? That's the memorandum of understanding. Okay, all right. Okay, so it's just three. All right.
All right, Councilman Davis. I was, the clerk had mispronounced a couple of words this morning because she's tired from yesterday. But I want to stand congratulations to Mary Leck, Spirit of Chariotus, for being the next mayor of Mobile. And also, I would like to congratulate Jennifer White. She got her seat back as councilwoman of Chickasaw on yesterday.
Yes, she did.
Congratulations. Anything else from this council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Woods.[1706.52]